I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. Welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Jeffrey Pennington, First Baptist Church of Smyrna. He's going to come forward, give our invocation, and also lead us in the place of the flag. But everyone, please rise.
Let's say the pledge first?
No, you're going to do the man.
Do the prayer first?
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's pray together. Father, we do thank you so much for today, and Lord, I just thank you so much for Smyrna. What a wonderful community you've blessed us with. As we begin a new year, Father, we do so with just a deep sense of gratitude and thankfulness for all that you've done up to this point with a great sense of expectation as to what you're going to do in the future. And Father, I just pray for our community that you'll just bless the longtime residents of Smyrna with a continued desire to participate and invest in our community. The Lord, you'll bring new people here as your doing in waves who have a heart to invest and make a contribution themselves. And Father, I just thank you for these wonderful leaders that you've put into place. Father, for the city council and for our mayor, Lord, that you will bless them with wisdom to not only know how to lead in the way of progress, but to also balance that with a desire to maintain the principles and the values within our community that should never change. So, Lord, just bless them with that ability and that wisdom. And I thank you again for this wonderful time tonight, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. For those folks who are looking for a church right out the door, hang a right and you're there. Been there for years. Great neighbors to have. Thank you, Jeffrey. Agenda changes. Don't believe we have any under the mayor's report. We're not going to have anything. Four and issue signings and annexation, nothing. Item five is privilege license A 2016-60. It's a public hearing, privilege license request 2016-60. Beer retail pouring at $25.99, South Cobb Drive with Gabriella Maria Esquivel as the agent. Is she here? Okay. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Ms. Esquivel will be the registered agent who's responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. She has been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance, and she has attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop, and you have a certificate attached. A background investigation that was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department has failed to reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of this license.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this license? Let the record show there is none. Mr. Cochran's going to swear you in, I think, so. This is in Mrs. Workson's district. You have anything you want to say here? Is that...
I'm happy to get this conversation started. This is located on South Cobb, and for those who may not be familiar with the exact location, the easiest way is to, it's across the street from the old Dairy Queen, but it actually sits between the mattress store on one side, which would be the northern side, and offices, which are law offices on the southern side. I believe this used to be, years and years ago, a Waffle House, but they now have the restaurant in it. Embedded in this request for alcohol pouring for beer, an alcohol license for beer pouring, is a waiver request on the distance requirements from school. The ordinance requires 600 feet. They actually are 505 feet, but as you remember, last fall, in dealing with another request, it became obvious to us that we needed to amend our ordinance to allow waiver potentials to occur when you're dealing with either wine or beer pouring, and that's the case that we have tonight. So, this is not only a request for a license, but also a request for that waiver.
Ms. Workson.
Thank you. And tell me if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, Ms. Es...
It's Esquivel.
Esquivel? Okay, thank you. So, one of the things I think that can mention that it is, this location is also within the 600 feet from a school, and I actually just received this information, or that it was going to be on the agenda just this afternoon, and so I feel that I haven't had enough time to look at all the information, and some of the information, I guess I haven't gotten yet, that I was supposed to get from the license department at the community development. So, what I'm going to request is to table this item so that I can have a chance to look at all the information, and so that's what I would like to do, make a motion to table it tonight.
Okay. How long before we hear something back? Give or take?
We just had a meeting upstairs. It's first I've heard that you didn't have the information.
If you table to the next council meeting, voting meeting, that would be until February 1st.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Still do the public hearing?
We have a motion to table. We don't have a second yet.
So, is there... Okay.
We have a motion to table. I'm going to say that, that's for lack of a second, so.
Mr. Mayor, are we still in the public hearing portion?
Yes.
Is the motion appropriate at this juncture?
No. No, I mean, I don't think we've... I think you're still in the public hearing portion.
Ms. Esquivel, thank you for dedicating funds and family to Smyrna and opening a business here and wanting to expand the business in this fashion. How many people are employed at the establishment currently?
Currently, we have about six people.
Okay. All live in Smyrna or nearby?
Yes, all of them in Smyrna.
Very good. You understand, having gone through the training class and the education around the privilege of serving alcohol, how important and responsibility that is, and the consequences of anyone in the establishment not fulfilling their obligation, of course.
Absolutely.
And you intend to be the person in charge of making sure they all stay in line on that front?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And you do know the city of Smyrna is pretty good at regular spot checks, just to make sure we have compliance and meeting our standards because of how important public safety is to us in the city.
Correct, sir.
And you're comfortable that you have that firm commitment from everybody on your team to make sure that no underage alcohol is served?
Absolutely, yes.
Very good.
Mr. Welch. Ms. Esquivel, can you give me a little background as far as your alcohol sales in the past and what's your... Have you held an agent's license before, or have you served alcohol in other locations?
Well, this is actually the first time that we're doing it here, so I am...
You personally?
Yes, correct, me personally. So, this is the first time. That's why we did want to go ahead and meet all the requirements as far as attending the, what was it, the meeting for, with the attorney? I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it.
But have you worked in establishments that sold alcohol in the past?
No, this is my first restaurant opening, so this is the first time we're doing this.
Okay. Is this critical for your business to be able to serve and make some restaurants?
We're trying to enhance it, so we feel that this might be just a small add-on.
Right.
You were mentioning a second ago, doing something with an attorney. Is that the training section at a vending?
Yes, the seminar. It was the seminar that we attended.
So, you attended a seminar that dealt with responsible sales?
Exactly.
Okay. And that's actually conducted by a lawyer?
That's why, yes, it's an attorney that conducted the seminar.
How long has your business been open, this current business?
About a year now.
Okay.
We're almost at a year mark now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask, I ask it, was there anyone else here, public input? Is there any other business out there that is affected by this, what we're looking at tonight? Is there any local business or owner of property? Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. concludes, I guess, the public hearing portion of the agenda. We just, we met upstairs for an hour talking about this, and there was no time it was ever brought up, that we didn't get enough information. People just found out about it today. Sort of surprising that we're going to table it now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be recognized for a motion then.
Okay.
I move approval of 2016-60 at the conclusion of this public hearing to grant privilege license request 2016-60 for beer, a retail pouring license at $25.99 South Cobb Drive with Gabriella Maria Esquivel as the agent.
I motion second to approve this previous license request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved. Still waiting on one person to vote. It's approved seven zero. Item number, that's approved. Item six is formal business A's Resolution 2016-01, approval of zip code resolutions, change the zip code in Ward Seven District to be a Smyrna address. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, due to annexation of Mableton addresses within the 30126 zip code into the city limits of Smyrna over the past several years, there currently is about 5,000 residents who live in unincorporated Smyrna but receive their mail at a Mableton address. This is the second resolution request, to request a zip code change. There was one in 2015 and one in 2016, and this one, the very first one was adopted on December 21st of 2015, Resolution 215-05, and this is a subsequent resolution to support a change in that, in that the mailing address is for those residences.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the benefit of the public, this was approved by the previous council, and my predecessor, Pete Wood, advocated this before his departure from council. I continued it in the previous council, and I'm asking this council to support our efforts to recognize those citizens who are now no longer in unincorporated Cobb, but are in fact in the city limits of Smyrna, paying Smyrna taxes, contributing to Smyrna in a lot of different ways, including as a member of the city council. And I think it only fair that we ask the postal service to grant the distinction of a Smyrna mailing address to those people who are actually in Smyrna. And so, the resolution reads as follows. Resolution 2016-01, a resolution of the Smyrna City Council, whereas the city of Smyrna has been recognized as one of the fastest-growing cities in Georgia for decades, growing from a population of just 2005 in 1950 to 10,157 in 1960, to 19,157 in 1970, to 20,312 in 1980, to 32,453 in 1990, to 40,919 in 2000, to 51,271 in 2010, and continuing to grow at an accelerated pace. And whereas the many areas annexed into the city over the past 60 years have added greatly to the city's housing, infrastructure investment, commerce, tax base, and therefore quality of life, and whereas the residents and businesses who have chosen to join the city through either incorporation or development have brought enormous talent, vibrancy, creativity, and personal investment into the city of Smyrna, bolstering its image and brand as a desirable place to live, work, play, and conduct business, and whereas the property investments made by some homeowners and businesses in the Smyrna city limits who pay Smyrna property taxes and receive Smyrna government services from the city remain in the United States Postal Service's Mableton 30126 service delivery area, which covers a sprawling area of southern Cobb County, including the area once known as the city of Mableton, which was dissolved in 1916 as a city. Whereas these residents and businesses are truly Smyrnans and wish to be able to proudly reflect that fact on their mailing address, and whereas an overwhelming majority of the impacted parties have expressed strong support for obtaining a Smyrna zip code, and whereas there is ample evidence of the U.S. Postal Service's ability and willingness to offer alternatives for compelling cases such as this, of the changing demographics like that evidenced here in the city of Smyrna, and whereas the city of Smyrna postal designation should be an easy transition and would provide a more reflective reality for Smyrna residents and businesses, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of the Smyrna City Council strongly support efforts to change the 30126 zip code for postal patrons within the city limits of Smyrna, Georgia, and urges the United States Postal Service to allow these Smyrna taxpayers to be provided with a Smyrna zip code without delay. I move approval, adoption, yes.
I'll second the motion.
I motion second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero.
Thank you.
Item six B, Resolution 2016-02, it's approved to adopt Resolution 2016-02, elected officials' purchasing card policy and employee procurement card policy. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this is in response to some recent action by the Georgia State Legislature regarding purchasing cards. The law, which took effect in January 1st of this year, now requires city councils who hold public office, they have to be authorized the use of government purchasing cards via a public vote by resolution. Further, the law mandates that municipalities enact policies regarding purchasing cards, their use, and there are six of these, and I'll read these, requires users to sign and accept a purchase card user agreement, descriptions of authorized and unauthorized purchases, stated transaction limits, procedures for addressing violations and imposing penalties, processes for auditing and reviewing purchases, and a description of the card administrator's responsibilities. We have a written policy regarding these requirements, but the referendum must be voted on by council in order to be compliant with OCGA 368024. This was a policy that was updated from the one that we had of our finance department and our, let's see, we had several folks involved in this. We had the assistant city administrator, Tammy, was working on this, and also Amy, our management government fellow in addition to finance. I would like to add that even though you are taking action on this resolution, that no one sitting here, no mayor, council, nor I, actually maintain a purchasing card, but this law requires this to be adopted, should you ever choose to take a position where you would like to use one of those purchasing cards. And I'd be happy to answer any particular questions if you have any.
Any comments? I guess this is Ron Fennel.
Finance administration. Mayor, given that the Georgia Municipal Association and the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia have established a basic format for this particular policy statement, I hereby recommend that we adopt this particular resolution encompassing that language within our city ordinances to address this issue in compliance with the state law. So, I move approval or adoption of Resolution 2016-02, approval to adopt Resolution 2016-02, elected official purchasing card policy and employee procurement policy.
Second. I motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item C 2016-64, consent to an agreement of assignment, assumption, atonement, transferring the franchise agreement between the city and Legacy Wendy Hill Limited Partnership from Legacy Wendy Hill Limited Partnership, the Gonna Fly Now LLC. Approve an Estoppel certificate indicate incident to this transfer and authorize the mayor to execute both documents. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor, Legacy Limited Partnership, who operates the Fox Creek Golf Course under a franchise agreement with the city of Smyrna, is seeking to sell and transfer its interest under the franchise agreement to the entity named Going to Fly, Gonna Fly Now LLC, and they wish to be released from any verbal obligation under that franchise agreement. The franchise agreement provides the city must approve any assignment before this transaction can take place. These documents approve the assignment of the franchise agreement and make certifications to the purchaser which enable this transaction to go forward.
This is also Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the golf course and the management agreement. We're allowing the transfer from one management entity to another, and therefore I move approval of 2016-64, consent to an agreement of assignment, assumption, and atonement. You lawyers. Transferring the franchise agreement between the city and Legacy Wendy Hill Limited Partnership from Legacy Wendy Hill Limited Partners to Gonna Fly Now LLC. Approve an Estoppel certificate incident to this transfer and authorize the mayor to execute both documents.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item D 2016-65, it's approval to hire Kristen Robinson as the finance director. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor and council, if we can get Kristen to come forward, I'm tickled to read this background. Kristen came to the city of Smyrna in January of 2013 after having served as the internal finance auditor for Douglas County Board of Commissioners. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of West Georgia in 2000, and she received her CPA in 2006. She's been doing governmental finance for the last, over the last 15 years, and I've worked with her since y'all appointed her interim finance director in August of 2015, and I got to tell you, I couldn't be more impressed. She bested all of the other candidates that we interviewed, and it is absolute without any reservation that I recommend that Kristen be appointed the finance director for the city of Smyrna.
Yeah, I think her husband's back there, some guy that's back there with Jeff and Jacob and Casey and Kinley, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Why don't y'all come up, since this is your big... Y'all have TV and... Come on up, come on up. They're staying up late.
I know.
They're overwhelmed. Hey, mommy gets a raise.
This is sort of a big deal.
Look at them. Pretty cute family.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. My babies.
Ron Fennel, who chairs the finance administration.
Mr. Mayor, it is with great pleasure that I echo the sentiments of the team that recommended and the administrator who is sending this to us for approval. I hereby, as Chair of Finance, move approval to hire Kristen Robinson as the city's finance director.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. The way this works is that city administrator makes his selection, really. He did all the interviewing, and in my time I've been up here, whatever that city administrator wants is his team. He pretty much gets it, so we're glad to have you. Congratulations.
Much. I look forward to working with y'all, continuing to work for y'all, so thank you so much.
I'm sorry, boys, she has to go upstairs and go to work for the rest of the night.
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all for coming. Item E 2016-34, it's approval of Ward Four reappointment to Smyrna Housing Authority, Jim Brooks. This is a five-year term, expires in May of 2020. Corky Welch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pretty simple appointment. I'm going to make a motion to approve item 2016-34, approval of Ward Four reappointment to Smyrna Housing Authority, Mr. Jim Brooks, a five-year term expiring May 2020. Mr. Brooks has served on this, on this authority for several years, and I think he'll do a very good job for us. Make that in form of a motion.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item F 2016-35, it's approval of Ward Seven, appointment to Parks and Recreation Commission, Seth Rubenstein. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017. Mr. Fennel.
It's my pleasure to nominate a point, I guess it is, the Parks and Rec Commission, Ward Seven Representative Seth Rubenstein. Lives in the Weatherbrook community off Camp Island. He's an officer on the Board of Directors of their HOA. He's also the co-president of the PTA at Nicket Jack Elementary. He's involved throughout the community in a lot of different things. He's going to be a great addition to the team, and his term is two years to expire December 2017.
I motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item G 2016-38, it's approval of Ward One reappointment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Marvin Bennett. This is a two-year appointment to expire December 2017. Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bennett has served on Parks and Recreation Commission before and done a great job, so this time I'd like to make a motion to approve Ward One reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Marvin Bennett. It's a two-year term to expire December 2017.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. It's approved seven zero. Item H 2016-43, approval of mayor's reappointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority, Joe Bland. Five-year term, expires December 2020. Someone were to make that appointment, I would appreciate it.
Move approval.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item I 2016-46, approval of Ward One appointment to Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Holly Elmandorf to fulfill a term to expire December 2016. Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to appoint Holly Elmandorf, resident of Argyle Estates, to actually fulfill my term on the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. She's going to do a fantastic job. I've gotten to know her, and I'm really excited about her joining the board. So, this time I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Ward One appointment to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Holly Elmandorf, to fulfill the term to expire December 2016.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item J 2016-52, approval of Ward Two appointment, Department of Housing Authority, Ted Wade. This is a five-year term to expire May of 2020. Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Yes, Your Honor, at this time I would like to make a motion to approve Ward Two appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority, Ted Wade. This is a five-year term to expire May 2020.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Seven zero. Item K 2016-53, approval of Ward Two appointment to the Smyrna Tree Board, Linda Owens, to fulfill a term to expire August of 2016. Ms. Bluestein.
Yes, at this time I would like to make a motion to approve Ward Two appointment to the Smyrna Tree Board, Linda Owens, to fulfill the term to expire August 2016.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item L 2016-54, approval of Ward Six reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Dennis Campo. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017. Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to, for the, ask for a motion for the approval of Ward Six reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of Dennis Campo, to continue his service. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017. I make a motion.
Motion second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Seven zero. Item M 2016-55, approval of Ward Six appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Paula Weeks. It's a two-year term to expire December 2017. Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of Ward Six appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Paula Weeks, in continuing her service. She was actually Ward Four's appointment, but glad to have her as Ward Six appointment, and this is a two-year term to expire December 2017.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item N 2016-56, approval of Ward Six reappointment, Smyrna Housing Authority, George Mercurius. It's a five-year term to expire May of 2020. Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I appreciate Mr. Mercurius's willingness to continue to serve. Ask for a motion, I'll make a motion for approval of Ward Six reappointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority of George Mercurius. This is a five-year term to expire May 2020.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item O 2016-57, approval of Ward Five reappointment to Parks and Recreation Commission, Eric Fanal. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017. Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Ward Five reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Eric Fanal. He's been serving on that committee and enjoys it and doing a great job, and I appreciate his service, and I'd like to move to approve his term to expire December 2017.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item P 2016-58, approval of Ward Three reappointment, Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Betty Williams. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017. This is Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, at this time I move to reappoint Betty Williams to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful, representing Ward Three. This is item 6P 2016-058.
Second. Motion second.
It's a two-year term to expire December 2017.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item Q 2016-59, approval of Ward Seven appointment to Smyrna Tree Board, Marge Igharto.
Igharto. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to recommend the approval. Marge Igharto to the Smyrna Tree Board to a term that will conclude August, expire August 2016. I'll second.
And motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item R 2016-63, approval of Ward Three reappointment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Liz Davis. This is a two-year term, excuse me, to expire December 2017. Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, I approve.
16-63, approval of the Ward Three reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, it's Liz Davis. This is a two-year term to expire December 2017.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item Seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Eight is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. There are three items on the consent agenda for your consideration. Item A is approval of the January 4, 2016, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval to terminate the city's ICMA RC 401A plan and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents. And item C is an authorization to enter into a restated five-year intergovernmental agreement between the city of Smyrna, Georgia and the city of, and the city of Marietta, Georgia, for the housing of Marietta prison inmates.
Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item Nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a announcement of a couple classes coming up offered by the Smyrna Police Department. The first two are active shooter classes that any citizen can attend. The first one is this Saturday, January 23, and the other one is Saturday, February 6. They're both at 2:00 PM here in city council chambers. They're also offering a firearm safety class on Thursday, January 28, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in city council chambers. So if you need more information or are interested in attending any of these, please email officerdefense@ldfns@smyrnaGA.gov. Also want to let everybody know I have my city email and cell phone and phone set up for you to contact me if you ever need me for anything. Dean Norton at smyrnaGA.gov. The office number, 678-631-5306, and all of my information is on smyrnacity.com. You can also look for updates on my Facebook page, www.facebook.com/nortonwardone. And I'll be emailing newsletters to constituents regularly. If you want to receive these newsletters, please send me the, an email at the deanorton@smyrnaGA.gov address. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Yes, Your Honor. I do not have a presentation as such tonight, but be careful. Tomorrow, we may get some interesting weather, so pay attention so that you're prepared. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Ms. Nullwich.
Hi, yes, I just have a couple of quick things tonight. We did vote on the resolution for the P-cards tonight. There's an article in the Marietta Daily Journal that's online, I'm guessing it will be in the print edition tomorrow, talking about the P-cards, and it, I sound a little bit like the guy selling soup or not selling soup in Seinfeld episodes, you know, no P-cards for you, but we have never had P-cards as elected officials. We have no intent to ever have P-cards as elected officials, but now we're in line with the state regulations, and we just have made it very, very clear that we are not going to have any P-cards, so I wanted to comment on that. I also did want to welcome Kristen Robinson. We have a very robust financial health situation here, and I look forward to her stewarding us onto continued success. And then I just want to note that there's some exciting things happening in Smyrna in 2016. We have Belmont Hills that's going to be opening up in the next few months. They are moving dirt at John Col Plaza on the corner of Spring in Atlanta. The Publix wants to be open by the end of 2016, so that's something that we can look forward to. And this is an exciting time to live in Smyrna. We're gonna be working on the Concord Road Linear Park. There are a lot of things in store, and a lot of big things happening near us in the county, so it's good, I'm optimistic, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one thing to report to say to me. I believe this coming Saturday is Keep Smyrna Beautiful cleanup. Anybody that is interested, please show up at the recycle center at nine o'clock in the morning. Look forward to seeing you there.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I don't have anything for Parks and Rec tonight, but I'd also like to encourage folks that live in Ward Five, if they want to participate in the cleanup, to come to the Bronner Hall on Saturday, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development doesn't have anything to report tonight, and actually I have nothing to report tonight, so I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been my privilege to cheer public safety over the past four years. Able hands now of Chairman Doug, no, it's Derek Norton over there, but it is privileged now to follow behind our pro temp in leading the Finance Administration Committee. We're about to launch on a budget with a new head at the helm. It's official tonight, so I'm proud of the team that we have, and I look forward to working with the administration on putting together the next budget and help reflect council's views on some of the ideas that we hope to accomplish in the year ahead, budget-wise. I wanted to let you know that my most recent newsletter was published last week. If you did not get one, send me an email, ronfennel@me.com, or you can send it through the website, the city's email address, and just let me know that you didn't get the newsletter, and I'll make sure you get on the list. To that end, we have an item of business in Ward Seven coming up next month. There is a request for a development, and as is customary for me, I have a town hall meeting to allow the developer, the owner of the property, and the staff to answer whatever questions the public might have about the impact of this proposal. That meeting will be held on February 4 in this room at 7:00 PM. I have a permission request, I already have the room reserved, but have a permission request that'll be on the next agenda of council, and I'll remind the public at that time. But I've been pleased that Chairman Stoner has agreed to join with me at that town hall meeting, since the development is gonna be adjacent to a neighborhood that will be affected traffic-wise by the development, and so he's gonna join me in this room for the town hall. The public is welcome. It's to just talk about the proposal. It's a 72-unit townhome community adjacent to an existing townhome on the East-West Connector at Camp Highland Road, and I look forward to having that proposal discussed in full and answer questions for the public. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just thank you all for your support of my recommendation for the finance director, Kristen. She's doing a great job. We have met internally to discuss the capital improvement project budget this year as we begin the FY '17 budget process. We got the wish list of projects that each of the department heads had submitted for consideration this budget year. I provided those to our new finance director and said this list is too heavy, and it came back $300,000 less, so she's off to a great start. We will reconvene on Thursday to finalize that list, and it will come back before council at the committee, the whole meeting on Monday.
Mr. Scott Cocke, anything? Mr. Terry Graham, anything? Item 10 is showhouse hearing. We do not have one. Got one person signed up for citizens input. Mike Detloff, 5036 Laurel Springs Way, Smyrna, Georgia. It's top of his motel next door.
I live at 5036 Laurel Springs Way. It's right off of Cooper Lake. I've been a resident there for 20 years, and these are townhouses, it's like one big house with a firewall in the middle, and these places, these townhouses are close together. Last May, my attached neighbor townhouse was sold, and shortly after it was sold, a young man bought it, and I noticed a lot of different cars showing up all the time. Turns out, every three to four days, somebody else was showing up new, and it turns out it's one of these houses that are advertised on the internet. It's one of these, it's advertised on VRBO and Airbnb, and it's, in my opinion, is nothing more than a motel. People are coming at all hours of the day and night. There's traffic coming. I've been woke up since this has been, since this has been going on in May, I've literally been woke up 12, about 12 times. The problem is, I always thought quiet hours in the city of Smyrna were between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. A lot of people, they're arriving at 2:00 AM, 1:00 AM, 12:20 AM, the car doors open, they, their trunks open, they take their luggage out, they slam the doors, they slam their trunks, and everybody, this, in this, it used to be when you had to shut your doors, everybody hit the side panel, but now everybody uses their remote, so the horns are going off. So if the doors and the trunks don't get you up, it's usually the horns going off that really wakes you up. And it seems like I've been woke up multiple times, like between 12:00 and 2:00 AM. It's not only me that is having problems with this, what I call a motel. I've got three different neighbors here that you have in your hand there that are always, they have complaints about this. There's four different people, three different households, including myself. I'm 66 years old. I make my living as an outside salesman. I try to get seven hours sleep. When I get woke up by these cars coming at nighttime and the horns going off and doors slamming, people settling in there in this motel, you know, a lot of times I can't get back to sleep. I'm running on four or five hours sleep, and again, I just thought that the city of Smyrna guaranteed their residents sleep between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and I'm not getting, I'm not able to get enough sleep, and I guess my three minutes are up.
No, you can go.
Okay.
Anything else you want to say?
It's just, it's just at the point, and you'll see the people on the other side of me at 5032 Laurel Springs Way, it's a young couple. When this first started, they didn't want to get involved when this started, when this place was, started up in May or June, and lately they've been getting woke up so much, and you'll see the young couple, they're an engaged couple. He finally got tired of it after we called the police about three weeks ago, and, you know, they're, they're just getting at their end of the rope, and I am too. I don't enjoy coming home anymore. I've lived there 20 years, and it's just not an enjoyable place to be next to a motel. I'm an outside salesman, so I do some limited, limited travel, and I expect when I travel to get woke up staying in a motel. Most people have had that experience, but I just don't want to come home and have a motel next to me, and I like to get my sleep. Again, look at the neighbors' comments on this, it's not only my complaint.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Fennel, make a quick comment.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate you coming to give us verbally what you and I had talked about, Mr. Detloff, on the phone, and I appreciate you putting in writing what is a pervasive, so this isn't a debate, so you can just listen. I'll let you know that around the country, communities are dealing with the VRBO and Airbnb marketplace. We did discuss it briefly among some of us upstairs at our pre-meeting after I had spoken with you. So unfortunately, the state law is also gonna be guiding on this. The legislature has had under discussion this phenomenon, which is a relatively new thing, of rental property, but if you are awakened by someone, by noise or disruption, you have the right as a citizen to dial 911, and our fine fellows in blue will come out and actually assess the situation. to dial 911, and our fine fellows in blue will come out and actually assess the situation for you at that time, and if there's somebody disrupting, according to our ordinances, they'll certainly address it. But we look forward to seeing a way for the legislature to help us address this, because it's not a phenomenon. If you Google VRBO or Airbnb right now and say, "Show me one nearby," how many are there? You probably have Googled it recently, just like I've done recently.
I do. I keep track of how many there are in Ward 3, and there's about a half a dozen on Airbnb the last time I looked.
Yeah. In Atlanta, there were well over 10,000 when the committee met, when they opened it up, but we're gonna follow that state legislation there in session for another 60 calendar days, only 40 days legally, but they'll be done with their work, and hopefully, they'll address some aspects of this, and we'll continue to do what we can to figure out what our problem is and how we can solve it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're trying, as it was suggested, to try to give these folks a citation and give you an example here. You'll have this letter here. This year, on January 5, it was a work night at 12:08. I got woke up because a car horn's going off at the motel. Called the police at 12:13. It took 42 minutes for Officer Martin, badge number 1343, to arrive at 12:55. I was informed by Officer Martin, a citation cannot be issued without them witnessing the noise, and so it's gonna be hard to give these folks, this owner of this property, citations, not unless there's a loud, ongoing party there. So, I was gonna ask if there's any way, like animal control, if there's two neighbors, they could witness the noise, you know, maybe we could start issuing citations.
If you'll give us an opportunity with legal counsel to consult about this matter so that we can have an opportunity to properly reflect in our ordinance how we address it, but again, we're partly guided by state law, and technically, the word motel has a legal connotation, and that is not meeting that definition under state law. So, this is a relatively new phenomenon across the country. Give us a chance to take a look at it.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. If there's no other business to be brought forth this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:21.